Chair Lewis, Councilmember Carr. Today, we will hold public hearings for two parking special permits in Manhattan. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearings procedures.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I am Angelina Martinez, Review Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, so members of the public who wish to testify remotely may testify by signing into, going to our website and signing at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse. And for those of you here in chambers, please see one of the sergeants or arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain unmuted until recognized by the Chair or I to speak. When the Chair or I recognize you, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony for this hearing to two minutes per witness. If you have, but if you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you have written testimony you would like to submit instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, you may email it to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely to remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair as council members may have questions for you. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this hybrid meeting for various technical reasons, and we ask that you please be patient as we work through any issues. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you, Council. I will now open the public hearing on LU's numbers 165 and 166 relating to the 213-227 West 28th Street Parking Special Permits in Councilmember Botcher's District in Manhattan. These applications seek zoning special permit pursuant to Sections 13-45 and 13-451 of the zoning resolution, which would allow two adjacent parking facilities located in the Manhattan Core, both to exceed the maximum permitted as-of-right number of accessory spaces, allowing a combined maximum capacity of 77 automated parking spaces on portions of the ground floor and sub-sellers of two recently constructed mixed-use developments. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Council, may we please call the first panel for this item?
Chair, do we want to let the... okay, apologies. So, the first panel for this item will be Dan Eggers, joining us remotely, Jeff Rubin, Deirdre Carson, Aaron Pollak, and Toko Saito. Apologies if I mispronounce any of your names.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Applicants, can you please raise your right hands? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answers to all council member questions?
I do.
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landustestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you to please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Hi, this is Dan Eggers. I don't think my video is enabled when I try to start it. It says you can't start your video because the host has stopped it.
Mr. Eggers, let's, let me see if we can get our team behind the scenes to help you out with that.
Thank you.
Give us just one second.
Sure.
Can you try your video now? I'm told it's been resolved. There you go.
Hi, all. Dan Eggers, Land Use Attorney at Greenberg Tcharg. I wish I could be there in person with you, but after three years of successfully avoiding COVID, it finally, finally got to me. But, but good to see you, albeit virtually. Chair Riley, Councilmember Botcher, Subcommittee members, we represent the applicants 215 West 28th Street Property Owner LLC and 225 West 28th Street Property Owner LLC, affiliates of Hap Investments and Iowa House. I will briefly introduce the project site and request its actions, and then discuss how the required findings have been met. Jeff Rubin from Phil Pabib and Associates will discuss the parking study and census data, and then my colleague, Deirdre Carson, will address comments made during the EULAR process. And Aaron Pollak will say a few words on behalf of ownership. Next slide. The applicants own two sites that are part of a single zoning lot on the north side of West 28th Street between 7th and 8th Avenues, 215 West 28th Street, that's Lot 31, and 225 West 28th Street, Lot 25. Two new, as-of-right, mixed-use buildings have been constructed on our zoning lot. We are applying for special permits under Section 1345 and 13451 of the zoning resolution to allow for additional accessory...
Mr. Eggers, I think, I think we need to load your presentation. Apologies, it had not been loaded.
Probably couldn't see that from where I...
Uh, we have your first page. Is there a page we should move to?
Yes, next slide, please, the area map.
Hold on, let me, can we forward the slides? Just one second, Mr. Eggers. There we go.
There we are. All right. So, as you can see, this site is on West 28th Street between 7th and 8th Avenues. The special permit would allow 41 spaces in 215 West 28th Street. That's a condo with 87 units. 20 spaces are permitted as-of-right, and the special permit would allow 36 spaces in 225 West 28th Street, a rental with 112 units. 24 spaces are permitted as-of-right, for a total of 77 spaces, an increase of 33 spaces over the 44 permitted as-of-right. Next, please. As you see, the garage entrances are at opposite ends of the zoning lot, about 160 feet apart. Next, please. Here is an enlargement of 215 West 28th Street's garage entrance. Next, please. Here is 225 West 28th Street's garage entrance in plan view. Next, please. And an enlarged view. Next, please. The five required findings are as follows. First, that the location of the vehicular entrances and exits will not unduly interrupt the flow of pedestrian traffic or create any undue conflict between pedestrian and vehicular movements due to the entering and leaving of vehicles. Here, the number of cars entering the garages at peak hours will be low, and the amount of foot traffic on the street is moderate. Specifically during the PM peak hour, that's 5:00 to 6:00 PM, there would be approximately eight minutes between a car entering or exiting each garage. Second, the location of vehicular entrances and exits will not interfere with the efficient functioning of streets. The garage's curb cuts are mid-block, and the operating system will prioritize entering vehicles over exiting vehicles, and will provide reservoir spaces to prevent vehicles from queuing onto the street. Third, such use will not create or contribute to serious traffic congestion and will not unduly inhibit surface traffic and pedestrian flow. The garages are far from the corner and will be on the mid-block of a street with moderate pedestrian traffic at the block's peak pedestrian traffic hour. This peak pedestrian traffic hour, the AM peak hour, will not overlap with the peak garage traffic hour, the PM peak hour. Fourth, such parking facility will not be inconsistent with the character of the existing streetscape. As you can see here, the facility entrances are small, less than 25% the ground floor facade, and would be consistent with other buildings on West 28th Street that include entrances for loading for commercial buildings. The fifth finding, which relies on the parking study, will be discussed by Jeff Rubin of Phil Pabib and Associates. We'll speak now. Thank you so much.
Jeff, you could just press the power button and just state your name for the record before you begin.
One moment, please. Testing. Okay, it works. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jeff Rubin. I'm a planner with Phil Pabib and Associates, and of course, part of the applicant team. Next slide, please. The fifth and most important finding for granting the special permit is that the number of parking spaces proposed is reasonable and not excessive in relation to recent trends in close proximity to the proposed facility with regard to, one, the increase in the number of dwelling units, and, two, the change in the number of public and accessory off-street parking spaces, taking into account the construction of new off-street parking facilities and the reduction in the number of such spaces in existing parking facilities. The Department of City Planning has formulated guidelines for analyzing the reasonableness of parking. They require a 10-year setback, look-back, pardon me, at developments within a one-third-mile radius of the project. The parking proposed is deemed reasonable if the ratio of change in residential parking spaces to change in residential units does not exceed 20%. Next slide, please. Thank you. The ratio here is far less than 20%. We found that 1,683 housing units have been added to this study area. 299 residential parking spaces were eliminated, and 173 spaces were created for a net loss of 126 residential parking spaces. This is a ratio of negative 7.5%. The proposed 33 additional spaces do not even replace the net 126 spaces lost over the last 10 years. The ratio produced with our project is negative 3%. Again, the standard for the finding is positive 20%. So, we are far below the standard and meet the finding easily. Secondly, Community Board 5 cited census tract low rate of car ownership at 17% as evidence that parking is not needed. However, the most recent American Community Survey data from 2020 shows that 30.4% of owner-occupied units in census tracts within a third of a mile of the project's site have one or more vehicles. In addition, when accounting for households with more than one vehicle for owner-occupied units in these census tracts, the rate of total vehicles to households is 37.8%. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Riley, Councilmember Botcher, and members of the Subcommittee. I'm Deirdre Carson of Greenberg Tcharrig. My colleagues, Mr. Eggers and Mr. Rubin, have shown you that Hap Investments' request for special permits for additional parking spaces meets the findings of Section 13451 of the zoning resolution. We believe really there's no dispute about that fact. As we proceeded through EULAR, however, it's been apparent that opposition to these applications is predicated not on a failure to satisfy the findings, but on a general community view that because the applicant's property is located near a transit hub, and the community as a whole has a low car ownership ratio, the application should be denied. These considerations, which might be appropriate if this body were being asked to revise the zoning resolution to eliminate the special permit, are not, we contend, relevant to the issues before you. In fact, the proposed additional parking is entirely consistent with the public policies enunciated by the City Planning Commission in its Manhattan Core Public Parking Study in 2011, the study on which the revision of Article 1, Chapter 3 of the zoning resolution in 2013 was based. And Article 1, Chapter 13 is the parking, set of parking regulations for the Manhattan Core. In that study, City Planning made the following findings. The Manhattan Core Parking Regulations, which were first enacted in 1982, had been successful in reducing automobile traffic into Manhattan. The supply of, number two, the supply of off-street parking in the Core had declined by one-fifth since 1982, and as our study shows, has markedly further declined in the area of the applicant's project over just the past 10 years, as parking lots and old garages are redeveloped for other uses. Three, most new parking facilities in the Manhattan Core operate as public garages in effect, largely because they accommodate residential monthly parking by people who reside in buildings that don't provide parking. Sometimes, in fact, up to 70% of all parkers in a public garage are residential monthly parkers. Automobile use, number four, automobile use as a primary means of travel to work declined after 1982 despite the increased number and share of households owning vehicles. Five, limited amounts of new parking would still be needed, they found, because people will continue to own cars even if they don't drive to work. Residents will use off-street parking to store their vehicles and not for local commuting. And finally, rates of car ownership are substantially higher in households with children, in households with higher income, in households in newer buildings, and in owner-occupied housing, conditions which are present characteristic of parts or all of applicants' projects. None of the essential facts upon which City Planning relied in enacting the Manhattan Core Parking Regulations has changed according to the American Community Survey for 2020. The number of parking spaces in the area continues to decline. Automobile ownership remains steady or has increased. People in this neighborhood don't use their cars to drive to work. Only about 4.5% do so. And auto ownership in higher-income households, owner-occupied housing, new housing in households with children, is higher than in the population as a whole. In light of these facts, the conclusion of the Department of City Planning in 2011 remains entirely valid today. The Article 1, Chapter 3 parking regulations that authorized the special permits sought by the applicant, quote, "strike a balance," close quotes, "between discouraging auto commuting in a traffic congested part of the city where transit access and walkability are excellent." And those words are City Planning's words, quote, "while recognizing that the need for off-street parking remains even when auto commuting is restrained," quote, close quotes. The proposed parking in the applicant's two garages will address that need. Accordingly, the special permits should be granted. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, and thank you, everyone, for having me and letting me speak. I'm going to speak about two topics. Sorry, my name is Aaron Pollak, and I'm from Hap Investment. So, I'm going to speak about two topics that I think that are very relevant and important. Number one is that we were buying a lot of inclusionary rights from projects that were creating affordable units, and we also created an affordable unit ourselves in the building. We maximize the amount of affordable units that we can create and maximize the zoning, and a big part of the economic plan around that was to get those parking spaces that allowed us to really maximize the amount of affordable units that we created in the building. The other thing which I think is also very important to take into consideration is that 100% of that parking facility will be accommodating EV car, would be able to charge. So, in the future, when everything is electrical, that facility would be able to have 100% of the cars only electrical and charging. And I think that if we think about it, and I know it's, I think, 2035, so there is still time until everything will move to electrical. The city really needs the infrastructure in order to move to electrical, electric car. The city needs the infrastructure to, to have 100% electric car, which mean parking that can charge. The other thing, and this, there is no research yet about it, but I'm sure that a lot of the parking that we have right now will never be useful in an electric world, meaning you will not, we will not be able to change them and make them a space that you can bring a car and charge. So, I think we will see a lot of parking being reduced in a neighborhood like Chelsea or in Manhattan in general, because you cannot, you cannot put a charger over there, or you cannot find a way to make it usable for an electric car. And if you think about the amount of parking that we are asking extra that will be able to charge a car, it's negligible against the amount of parking that we will lose during these years. Thank you very much for listening.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a few questions for the applicant team that I'm going to pass to the Councilmember Botcher. Our research shows that building parking incentivizes car ownership, leads to increase, and leads to increased congestion. In 2013, the CPC wrote in their revision of this special permit that these limits on parking would, over time, reduce the overall number of public parking spaces, and with fewer parking spaces available, fewer motor vehicles would enter Manhattan's most traffic congested areas. As the climate crisis becomes more urgent, and the city and states move to curb transportation emissions, what is your argument for how we could justify acting to simultaneously incentivize car ownership in a location where less than a quarter of residents own cars and they have some of the best transit access in North America?
Okay, so congestion is a function not of local commuting. It is not, automobile congestion in Manhattan is not a product of people who get up in the morning and say, "I'm going to drive six blocks to work." In fact, in this particular census tract, a very high percentage of people walk to work, which is, and I think, a higher percentage, according to what I saw in the American Community Survey data, is higher than, than average. But that doesn't, that doesn't decide whether a person owns a car. A person often owns a car because they have a need or a desire to get out of New York City. They don't use it on a regular basis. They use it, they use the garage for storing a vehicle that then enables them sometimes to visit family, sometimes to get to a location outside of the city that they go to for other purposes, sometimes educational, sometimes recreational. But, in fact, it is not used on a, on a daily basis for commuting. So, to the extent that we talk about congestion, studies have shown that Lyft and Uber are contributing a lot more to congestion in Manhattan than private car ownership in this part of town. That people, because those cars, which are privately owned, come into the borough, and then they drive around waiting to pick up a ride. And there are studies that show that, that they are major contributors to, and I don't think we're talking about doing away with them. We are talking about congestion pricing, which I know there probably some members of this committee who wouldn't be thrilled about, but, but, but that would be something that would also tend to discourage local commuting. I mean, if you're going to pay $23 every time you take your car out of the garage, and you would, you know, if you were in this area of Manhattan, you would be subject to congestion pricing. So, unless your income was low. So, so those are, those are things that I think are important factors for important issues that, that need to be addressed about controlling congestion, but it is not private ownership of automobiles by the people who live in these parts of town that are causing the congestion. The, the other thing about greenhouse gas emissions, and it is important, and I'm by no means suggesting that it's not important, but the answer to that is the answer that we're all looking forward to, which is the conversion to electric vehicles, which is coming by mandate to us. And as Mr. Pollak has said, this is a building that has been designed to actually accommodate electric vehicles, to accommodate charging, rather than vehicles that are fueled with fossil fuels. So, we believe that, number one, this garage with its very relatively small number of parking spaces, which will be used by residents, not just the residents of the building, but also people who live in those buildings that have those 1,600 units that have been built around us, most of which don't have parking, those people looking for a place to park can park in our building. And that is the objective here, is to provide local parking for residents in the neighborhood. This is not the kind of facility that is going to lend itself to transient parking by people who are coming in to go to the theater. Not that I think that they'd find their way to this parking garage in any event. I hope that answers, is responsive to your question.
Yes, very responsive. Producing the predominance of cars in Community Board 5 is urgent to the community. Just within Community Board 5, there were 224 pedestrian injuries, 194 bicyclist injuries, and 244 motorist injuries from vehicle crashes so far this year. Two pedestrians died on 29th Street is the most dangerous community district in the city for the, for traffic injuries over the past eight years. How would the additional parking work to benefit pedestrians or bicyclists? And also, the proposed garages are side-by-side with two curb cuts. Having two separate curb cuts is, if not absolutely necessary, doubles the number of locations where vehicles can conflict with pedestrians, and if you're walking, doubles the numbers of locations where you have to be extra wary of any vehicles potentially entering or exiting. Why are these proposed as two separate garages? What is the justification for that? And can you combine them so there's only one entrance and one curb cut?
There are two separate garages because they're two separate buildings, and there are, they were structured in order to limit the size with respect to each building. The, the garage for the rental building is smaller than the garage for the condominium building, and, and they reflect that change, that difference in the structure of the ownership. It, it would be difficult now, because if we were to, we would have to, they're not a single building, there are two buildings, and we have to maintain certain ratios of frontage in retail, in lobby entrance, and in parking entrance. And we would have difficulty achieving, we couldn't, we, we have small reservoirs, not small reservoir spaces, but we have a small number of reservoir spaces required for each of these garages, partly because we're trying to limit the amount of space that has to be dedicated in the frontage to cars entering and exiting. So, if we were to have a single garage, we would have to have a lot more reservoir spaces, which would mean a complete redesign of the entire ground floor of both buildings, and I'm not sure we could accomplish it in, in compliance with law.
I just want to add that, first of all, it's right, it's two different buildings, two separate buildings, but the fact that we had to do everything two separate and it's two buildings will contribute in the future, the system would be able to use the two, the two entrances in a way that is much more efficient and much more, I would say, like you said, less dangerous, faster, and smoother for the, for the neighborhood. So, you know, we did address that, we did thought about it, but decided instead of fighting the two entrances and reduce it to one, that seems like, seems like, as a developer, it seems like it would be cheaper to have only one elevator, one shaft, one everything. But eventually, we realized that it's, it's, we can benefit from that by, by letting the technology manage it better and using two, two, two entrances, but in a much better way, and a much safer way than using one.
It would require a major overhaul of the design of the ground floor, though I have, that's very important. There are two buildings, by the way, because there, the law here prohibited a longer frontage. You can't have a single building with the amount of frontage that they had, so they had to build it as two separate buildings, and one of the peculiarities of the M160 zoning district in this location. I, I did want to say that the parking garage entrances are 160 feet apart, so they're not really close to each other. There's quite a bit of space between them, so you're not, you know, just passing one and then, you know, finding yourself in the middle of another.
And can you answer the question of how would the additional parking work to benefit pedestrians and bicyclists?
Well, it, it reduces the need for people to be circling the block, looking for on-street parking. You know, people who live in the building who want to make drop-offs or whatever, they don't have to double park in front of the building. They can come in and, and I, there is not a bike lane. can come in and, um, and I, there is not a bike lane here. Uh, this is not a bike lane street. So, um, while there are undoubtedly people who ride bicycles, there's, I, I've noticed, I, I grew up a long time ago, and we used to have rules of the road for riding bikes. We're supposed to ride, you know, the same way the traffic goes and kind of stick to the right on the street and all that sort of stuff. People I know don't do that, but we are on the left. This is a one-way street. We are on the left side of the street. So, technically, I think the, the bicycles should sort of be a little over to the right and therefore would not be conflicting with cars that are turning in, or, yeah, cars that are turning into our garage. Um, you know, there, the number of bicycles is not the subject of any data that I, on this street, is not the subject of any data of which I'm aware. As I said, it's not a bike lane street. Um, but it is, um, uh, as far as pedestrians are concerned, that there's, the amount of traffic, pedestrian traffic that is observed here and has been measured by the engineers was not deemed to be that significant that there was a prospect for conflict. Eight minutes, every eight minutes at peak times in theory, because I, I don't actually believe there'll be that many cars going in and out during peak hours. But if you have a car going in every eight minutes, that and the pedestrian traffic is moderate, it's just not probable that there's likely to be much of a conflict.
If the special permit that you're seeking were not approved, how would you utilize the space that would have been devoted to additional parking?
Um, first of all, we, we'll do the, uh, automatic parking with the amount of cars that is allowed, with the twenty percent that is allowed. Um, we were thinking about storage, all kinds of things. We didn't really, uh, dig into that, uh, I would say, uh, deep enough to make a decision. Uh, obviously, because it doesn't really making, you know, there is nothing that will make the same economics, uh, as, uh, parking. Uh, and as I mentioned, the, the amount of parking was a, a major important thing in the economic of this, uh, project.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Botcher?
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation.
Oh, Councilmember Botcher, woman. I'm so sorry. We've been joined by Councilmember Brayu and remotely by Councilmember Moya. Sorry. Councilmember Botcher?
The two thousand thirteen update to the Manhattan Core parking regulations, of which this special permit was part, increase the opportunity to use accessory parking garages for car rental or car share in an, in an explicit attempt to increase Manhattan residents' access to those vehicle options, which, uh, would reduce the need to own a car. How many spaces here will be allotted for car rental or car sharing vehicles?
Yeah, well, we didn't, the, so the, the system, first of all, is, uh, giving opportunity, at least from technology perspective, for a lot of things. Um, so, uh, some of them is, uh, obviously, on the concept of, uh, car sharing. Uh, one of the concept that , uh, we were, we are thinking to adopt or, is that, uh, they can use it on a base of, uh, like availability. So, one of those zip count companies or one of those companies that giving, uh, review, that giving those, uh, services, um, they can definitely, you, you know, instead of saying, "We're dedicating twenty spaces right now," uh, we, we're thinking or, or exploring the, the opportunity to just do that on availability, between, you know, between the two systems. Like, from technology, it's, we tell, uh, one of the companies, "We have ten spots available for the next day or for the next two days." We can give that availability also to people that buy the parking. So, let's say they buy the parking, they own it, now they're going for a week, they can get income if they give it to one of those services. So, the whole concept of the system is, uh, obviously to be very green, adopting a lot of, uh, new method, uh, of, uh, transportation. And in general, that's what I, that's, I feel also culturally that the younger generation will use cars and parking as a supplemental to, uh, public, uh, transportation. I don't see them using cars like each, in, in twenty years ago. You own a car and you use it every day, you're doing everything with your car. I don't see that happening, no matter what. So, the, the system is giving a lot of opportunity to, first of all, adapt also new thing in the future and, uh, also accommodate things like you are saying. Yes, absolutely. That's, that's one of the, the main goals.
Do you plan on making any of the vehicle spaces available to people who live in the surrounding community, and if so, at what price?
Like, uh, with, monthly, you're talking about monthly, uh, subscription or something like that? Yeah, we, 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 we looking to do that. Um, whatever is the market price. Um, the, the, the only benefit that, uh, we might be able to give on top of a regular, uh, monthly is that, you know, we might be able to give you only a week or two weeks, so you don't need to really commit maybe to a thousand dollar or eight-hundred dollars a month, and that's what's the prices, uh, today. Uh, we really see transportation now and in the future different, and also parking, obviously, and the uses of, like I said, it's going to be more as a supplemental to public, uh, transportation, and we allow a use that will go for, will go align with that.
How many bike parking spaces will be available?
In the, in the buildings?
In the buildings.
There is a lot. Uh, maybe, maybe a hundred? A lot. More than the code was requiring, for sure.
And do you plan on making any of the bike parking spaces available to members of the community?
Um, never, we never, uh, thought about it. Um, so, I, I...
There's a bike parking room which is separate from the, um, just let me finish. There, there's a bike parking room that is separate from the, the car parking area, so it would be accessed differently. And I, I don't know, I'm not sure that that had, issue has been thought through, whether it would be possible to make access available.
There is, uh, there are actually, there, there are actually few, uh, bikes room, uh, I think more than one in each building, and, uh, the, huh? I think there was a little bit, there was one and a half. And, uh, there is, uh, use of, uh, fab and security and things like that. We never thought about the logistic of, uh, making that, uh, available, uh, to the, to outside, uh, bill, people. But it's an interesting, uh... Yeah, I mean, we're gonna look into it. It's an interesting thought.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Do we have any other council members with questions for this applicant panel? Okay. There may no further questions for this applicant panel. You are now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who was to testify on two-thirteen dash two-twenty-seventh, West Twenty-Eighth Street Parking Special Permit Proposal, remotely or in person?
Chair, we have no members of the public who signed up to testify remotely, and if anyone here in the room would like to testify, please identify yourselves to one of the sergeants. Looks like we have no one in person either.
There being no other members of the, excuse me, there being no members of the public who was to testify, LU's numbers one-sixty-five and one-sixty-six relating to the two-thirteen dash two-twenty-seventh, West Twenty-Eighth Street Parking Special Permits Proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, Len Hughes, and other council staff, and the sergeant-at-arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.